Hey, thank you, babe.
Good evening. Thank you, appreciate it. I call this City Commission Special Call Meeting of Tuesday, Thursday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-two to order at three P. M. May we please stand for the invocation provided by Pastor Wallace, followed by the pledge of the Legion.
Let us pray. Father, we stop to tell you thank you in the city of Pahokee. Thank you for all your blessings that you sent our way. Now, God, let us tend to the business of this city. Let us have clean hearts and clean minds, and let us put our personal issues aside to address the concerns of our citizens. We ask for your divine protection and oversight as we do the work of the city. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Bab.
Present.
Vice Mayor Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Mervin.
Present.
Commissioner Perez. City Manager.
Present.
City Attorney.
Present.
City Clerk.
Present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, staff, and thank each of our residents for being here this afternoon to participate in this special call meeting. The purpose of the meeting is to approve this centennial expenditure and planning. We'll all be making some comments and discussion on this item. I would just like to start off by saying that there have been no checks that I'm aware of that have been signed in the last month to pay our vendors for services rendered and ordered. The budget was passed, and no meeting should be necessary to pay expenditures because of the budget. This is a total lack of responsibility on the administration with signing authority to attempt to block centennial events from occurring. To me, as mayor, this is sad. We shouldn't be here, but we are, and hopefully we can take care of whatever business that need to be taken care of so we can continue with our centennial. And as mayor, we're not gonna beg. We're gonna ask that these checks and these payments and these receipts be honored and vendors be paid so we can move forward. And lastly, I would like to say, well, I'll say that from my comments, but we're gonna allow also the Chair of this Centennial Committee to just give a report and bring us up to speed as what have occurred and what has been the barrier that is preventing some of these events. Our gala is coming up, sad, and even the food vendor, which is one of the biggest expense, haven't been paid, not even a advancement to order the items that need for the event. And then the Commission will discuss whatever action we need to take to make sure that this is done in a timely, proper manner.
Before we start, may I ask the City Attorney a question?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, City Attorney, can you please explain what Resolution twenty-one, twenty twenty-one thirty-nine is about? Get a clarity on that?
I'm sorry, I just wanna understand your question. You want me to explain this resolution?
Yeah, keep explaining to everybody what it's about and to the Commission what it's about.
Sure. So this is a resolution that was passed at the end of October twenty twenty-one titled "A Resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pahokee, Florida, Establishing the Centennial Committee." And what this, what this resolution does is it establishes the committee itself. It requires that it be comprised of residents of the city with an interest in celebrating the one hundred year history. It is required to be chaired by a resident that is appointed by the committee. That appointment was made on November ninth, twenty twenty-one, and the committee will make, shall make recommendations to the City Commissioner, the City Commission on the proper ways and means to celebrate the city's centennial, one hundred year's centennial. And those recommendations under this resolution were required to be made by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so the committee is supposed to come to the chambers, right, to the Commission for approval? Does that give them the rights to just get the money, or do they need permission from the Commission to get the money, to get the bills paid?
So this resolution, I think, is brief. I would need to go back and review that, that meeting on the twenty-sixth, when it occurred, and then again on the ninth, to see the discussion and the direction of this, of this body. You know, unfortunately, I wasn't here at either of those meetings, so I don't have, I don't have a recollection of that. I am happy to go back and review those meetings and see what the direction of the Commission was at that time, although I would need, you know, at least a few hours.
Just, just to be fair to Council, she, she didn't have this until she got here today, and she has no history with it, so that's her, her reasoning for asking to review the meeting.
And Commissioner Gonzalez, if I could, this committee was formed to assist the city in putting on this centennial event. They have done everything that the city has requested as far as submitting invoice, getting different bids, at least three proposal prior to selecting the vendor. We passed a budget of thirty-five thousand dollars. It don't go directly to the committee. It comes from the city. They receive the receipts, and they have an obligation now because we have authorized this event to pay the bills. And why there any hesitant to do that is beyond me. We don't need, I'm, I'm gonna emphasize again, we did need a meeting today to pay bills. We don't. Hopefully, this meeting was called because of the lack of payment, and this Commission is now making emphasis, strong emphasis, on this administration and who's ever have the signing authority to pay bills to do so.
And if you could recall, I sent a request to have a special meeting last week. You denied it. I was trying to get them paid last week.
I denied it because at that point, I didn't feel we needed a meeting, and the reason that I was told that you called the meeting was to rescind your motion to have a budget in place for this Centennial Committee. So I wasn't gonna be a part of that, but certainly if the reason behind the meeting is to make sure that payments are made, I'm one hundred percent in favor of that.
Right, I feel more comfortable, I would have felt more comfortable if you would've just called me personally to get clarity.
You have three other, you, you don't need but three. I have a right to not be in support of a special meeting. Not only this special meeting is called, it's costly. We got IT out here, we got security shaft, we got residents, we have a meeting that's called in the middle of the day when we normally call it at six, but I agree with that part because once we come to a conclusion, we now have enough time to at least get these checks off today, but that's the only reason. But we really need to have these called meeting when it's just utmost urgent and we don't have time for representation.
Well, see, that's what I'm saying. I'm not putting all the blame on you, don't take it the wrong way. What I'm saying, that's where the problem starts. You know, we're not seeing eye to eye. My intentions are to get paid, people paid. That was my intentions from the first meeting. That's why I'm here today. That's why I requested it again, to get people paid.
And we appreciate that, but it was unnecessary. We shouldn't have to tell the administration and whoever have the signing authority to go ahead and pay the bills unless there is some reason why a certain invoice is not being paid, and that should be relayed to this Commission as well as the Chair and the Committee saying, you know, you don't have the proper documentation for this particular bill, but the other bills, they should have been paid. All of them really, at this point, I believe, should have been paid in a timely manner. It's gonna ruin our reputation when we have to use these vendors in the future because they're feeling that, you know, we, we have vendors are calling, asking what's the problem? What's the concern? I have a...
No, I understand, but I have vendors calling me too, so I understand.
Wait, I, I have something to say, okay? First of all, from the beginning, this committee was formed, I guess, I guess, the way that, that they wanted to form it and the way that it should have been. They had two meetings before all the members were there, and they had a chairman without the committee fully being formed and advertised, and the first meeting with all the members. I'm not done. That's first of all. Second of all, it's supposed to be recommendation. To me, recommendation is recommendation. No, I go out, I do what I want, and then I bring you the bill and you pay it. That's the way it's been done in the past. That's the way, it's not gonna be done when I'm here. If we said to do it right, we're gonna do it right. Every, every, everybody in the committee was told, you need at least three quotes from each vendor, okay? The reason why? I re, I've requested it. I asked the City Manager. I talked to Johnny about it. He said, "Don't worry about it, don't request it, I'm getting it from Mr. Pitney," okay? I was told the only one that had several quotes for each of his events was him, nobody else. I'm not gonna let the committee just go out and hire whoever they want. First of all, you gotta make sure that you're insured, that you're a legitimate business, and it's gonna be done the right way. I, I, I didn't come here to approve whatever bills you're gonna give me. I'm not gonna do that, even though whatever happens today, I know it's not gonna matter 'cause after the twenty-second, y'all gonna go back to doing it however you wanna do it.
Yes.
That's what you want to say anyway.
Okay, I hope everybody, I hope everybody that's listening heard that, okay? Look at the, look at the people present, the people that have been here forever, ever since I got started, the people that did the, the recall, the people that been behind the whole thing.
We're talking about the centennial.
Yes, and I, and so am I.
Centennial.
And so am I.
Now, when you're talking about the recall.
And so am I. And so am I. And so am I. And so am I. So, yeah, let's move forward. Let's move forward, let's both do whatever you wanna do, I'm ready for it. I'm definitely ready for it.
I'd like to say something if you're done.
I just wanna take the video.
Are you done, Commissioner?
Yeah, I'm done.
I'd like to speak. I think that you should have the guts to say that I'm the person who didn't sign them and stop all this beating around the bush. I am the person who did not sign the checks.
I want you guys to say.
No ifs, ands, or buts about it.
It takes two to sign.
Right.
Yeah, you definitely won.
So, that's fine. I don't have, I'm talking.
It's gonna ruin your city.
I don't have any problem with saying that on camera because it was my understanding that everything was supposed to be brought back to the Commission for approval prior to the checks being cut.
No.
Now, whether you all believe that, you don't believe that, you want it to be that way, or you don't want it to be the way, that's when I voted yes for this resolution. That was what I understood to be effect. So when it came time to sign the checks, I knew that none of that had been approved by the Commission, and I was not gonna do something that I was not supposed to do because, as we all know, every time y'all think I'm not doing what I'm supposed to, I get pulled up on a bunch of crap. So whether y'all like it or you don't like it, I don't really care.
It's now y'all, it's the white lady, the white lady, remember? This is a black city. This is a black city. We gotta take the city back, right? The blacks want the city back, right? That's your take on it. No, that's why you made it. That's what you made it on Facebook.
You out of order, man. You out of order.
And...
Be in control of yourself.
So, here's the thing. When I say y'all, it's a southern y'all, you know? Get over it.
No, it's 'cause you're white.
Okay, but it doesn't matter. What I'm saying is that when I voted yes for this resolution, my understanding was one thing. If that is not the will of the Commission, that's an entirely different thing. The reason I'm, I voted yes to have this meeting was so that we could resolve whether or not the committee could just take the money, turn in the things, and say, okay, here's the money, there it is, and there's no approval by the Commission? If that's how y'all want it, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. If that's not how it was meant to be, and that was what I understood, that that was not how it was meant to be, that everything had to come back before this Commission for approval, and I don't appreciate everybody saying that I'm holding everything up. I am not holding everything up. I am trying to do this by the rules. So whether anybody believes that or not, I really don't care at this point because I know what I believe and what I meant.
Are you in favor of this centennial?
No.
Apparently not. You didn't go, you didn't go to the parade, you didn't go to the prayer practice.
I am talking, Mr. Mayor, I am talking. It is not your place. You called her for interrupting me, so you, please, be quiet and don't interrupt me either.
I, I thank you to make your point, though.
I have not made my point, and I am not done.
We're not gonna sit up here and listen.
It doesn't matter, I have every right to speak, and you cannot shut me down.
Yes, I can, at a certain time. You're not gonna sit up here and speak a half an hour.
I can speak as long as I wanna speak.
No, no, you can't.
Yes, I can.
But Mervin can. Can Mervin just stand here and speak for all?
Everyone has the opportunity to speak. Everyone has.
It doesn't matter to me.
We're not, all right?
I'm not.
No, you came here to defend for all, for all the people that you guys hired. That's what you want us to do.
Commissioner Perez, you're out of order. You...
Everybody is out of order. Oh, you're gonna...
Please, please, I'm the order.
Yeah, we, we're not in favor.
Mayor, mayor, mayor.
Now, now everybody could speak.
Commissioner Perez, you're out of order. You're out of order.
My God, I wish you would've done that. All the meetings that we were in the road.
We're doing it now.
Oh, you're doing it now?
Yes, you're out of order.
But you didn't do it when you were supposed to do it.
We need to allow, we need to allow Commissioner Mervin to make her comment.
I haven't finished with my comments.
You're not gonna make your point. You're not gonna...
You know why I'm angry? Because I have served this city for over thirty, twenty-some years, twenty-some years, to see you guys fight it out, to see you guys fire us, fire us for this, for this corruption.
Commissioner Mervin, any comments?
Let the Chairman of this centennial come up.
Do you have any comments at this point?
Yeah, my comments would be, Mayor Bab, back, you have the, the resolution when the committee was appointed. Every Commissioner up here appointed someone for the committee. They notified who they wanted on the committee. The committee got together, scheduled a meeting with everybody that was appointed. If you can remember, Commissioner...
You notified, you notified them?
Every Commissioner...
I'm not talking to you. I'm not talking to you.
Every Commissioner notified who was appointed, who their appointee was. That, those committee was approved by, by the Commission. When they chose to chair, there was a committee meeting. It wasn't done in the dark. Everybody was notified of that meeting. Commissioner Gonzalez, at the time, was saying his internet wasn't working.
Mine, I wasn't either.
Y'all two are interrupting the speaker.
Everyone was notified of that meeting. I can remember some of the committee that was even on the meeting. They asked about appointing a chairman for the meeting. The chairman then stepped up and said she would just be the chair. It was appointed by the committee. She, the chair at that time, who is the chair now, did not wanna be the chair of the committee. No one, no one took the rope and say, "I will chair the committee." She said these words, "Since I'm, I'm very busy with my church, but since no one else will take thee, to be the chair, I will do it." That's how the chair got to be appointed. Anything else went on, every meeting was sent out to everyone. I can't help, if you don't read your email, everyone know who the chairperson is. Everyone knows who Ms. Eifield is. If there's any question about anything, those two are very easy to be accessible, even Mr. Carter-Walts. So to have this meeting, and no, it was never said this stuff would come back to the Commission. The City Manager is sitting right there. He put Mr. Pitney in charge of all of the invoices to go to Mr. Pitney. The chair would get all of the invoices, take them to Mr. Pitney. Mr. Pitney would forward them to the city. Now, if there's any discrepancies in there, you gotta blame the administration. It's not on behalf of the committee. I've been on those committee calls, and the false statement that Mr. Gonzalez is the only one put in the three quotes is not true. Every committee there put in the quotes. Pastor Wallace is very firm, not just with one, with everyone putting in the quotes.
Is Adam, Dr. Johnny?
Putting in the quotes for the, the committee.
Three quotes for each?
So, so just to say this, but I would like to hear from the chair.
After you make your comments, yeah?
Yes, but I do think this meeting is a very uncalled meeting, that we have to have vendors waiting. We have a centennial that's waiting, that's happened on the twelfth. Those two have to buy materials. How they gonna buy them in one day and then come out and decorate for the twelfth? I think it's very sad on the city of Pahokee to hold up payment for vendors, but I would like to hear from the chair.
Before we go to the chair, I'd like to have the City Manager speak on why, in his explanation, why bills haven't been paid to the vendors. In addition to Vice Mayor refusing to sign, if, if that may be the only reason, I'm not sure, but if there are others, please let us know.
You know, this resolution is pretty clear on the chair and who it's picked. The Vice Mayor had some concerns about the lawfulness of the committee awarding some of these contracts and it not coming back to the city. She felt it was the city's responsibility to do this. So all the bickering back and, bickering back and forth, I think what needs to be clarified or resolved is, was that the Commission's intent to give the authority to this committee to solicit and award these, these contractors. So if that was the intent, that clears all this up, and we can move on. But that's, that's the real question here. But that, to answer your question, is she had some questions about the, the lawfulness and the legitimacy of the, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, this committee making those decisions on its own.
Did you provide instruction to this committee as far as how in the process of soliciting vendors, and that they must receive three quotes, and afterward they would send the quotes to you for approval of payment?
Yes, I asked Mr. Pitney to be the conduit between the committee and myself.
So how in your interpretation would that be any difference from the resolution?
Not my interpretation, I'm just saying, if you could, if the Commission's wishes could be clarified, it's not up to me, it's completely up to the Commission. So if that was the question, y'all can clarify that now.
Could we ask Mr. Pitney to talk, please? I have a couple of questions.
Let's move forward with the, let's do the Chairman, we'll have Mr. Pitney next.
Okay.
Chair, if you would, make any comments you would like at this time.
I'm the chair. That you understand that time wasted, I know volunteers and the people that you recommended deserve.
Thank you so much. I'm Reverend Dr. Patricia Wallace, thirteen eighty-one East Main Street, and I was elected to be the Chair for your Centennial Committee from the persons whom you recommended to serve in your, in your space. Every Commissioner gave names of people that they want to serve on the committee. Those persons were notified, we received that list from your City Clerk, and they were notified, and not all showed or participated in the process. I'm, I was born and raised in Pahokee. I'm sixty-eight years old, and I don't have time to play games with people, their lives, their money. This Centennial Committee has met every Thursday at the same time, and every Thursday, when we finish with that meeting, we supply to the Commissioners, the City Clerk, City Manager, including Mr. Pitney, the outcome of all of our meetings. We have been doing this since the end of November. Now, the paper I gave to you show you the value of the time alone for the members and the volunteers who have done, which equals to eight thousand nine hundred and four dollars and eighty-nine, forty-eight cents of in-kind services, and that don't include me 'cause I'm ten thousand a month. So if you add me into that equation, you're talking about forty-eight thousand dollars of our time that we spent because we want to make sure our city is represented correctly. Now, we have not done anything illegal. We don't get any of the money. All money from sponsors have been deposited into the Bank of Pahokee. I have a list of over seven thousand five hundred and some dollars that has been given to the city by our vendors, and we have not been able to pay the vendors who have already rendered services to our city. The budget was voted on by you. Our agenda and our paid schedule for what we would charge each vendor was voted on in this Commission meeting by you, and we did not make these decisions on our own. We were told that if the, the event was three hundred dollars, we had to have two quotes. We did that. If it was seven hundred and fifty dollars, there would need to be three. Every member did that. The only person I really had problems doing that was Commissioner Juan Gonzalez. I had to keep telling him, no. He said he gave it to the City Manager and Mr. Pitney. Last week, he finally started sending me some vendor quotes. We took it back to the committee, we voted on the items that he presented. I don't, I don't know what he's showing y'all today, but he did not submit the amount of vendor quotes necessary for us to send it through to the city. We had, you cannot mix DJs with bands or other things, it has to be of light nature. And he wanted a steel band that was twenty-five hundred dollars, and we only had one quote. Now, today, he tell me that it's cut down and want us to consider it. We have not voted on the steel band because it would not meet all the needs that we have for March to twenty-sixth event. Now, we got vendors that have done work for this city, they've been calling me, and they are very upset that we refuse to sign checks. I understand that Mr. Thompson told me he had signed the checks. Last Friday, the check, some of the checks were ready. However, Vice Mayor Bowman never responded to sign the check. I attempted to call Vice Mayor Bowman, and I didn't get a response back. I sent all of the Commissioners, including the Vice Mayor and the City Clerk and the Manager, an email and told you how I felt about what we were doing in the city. We have sponsored, really, three events because we piggyback on Martin Luther King Day. Some of you were there. We did the parade. Some of you chose not to come. Mr. Gonzalez, you brought candy and said you had to go to work. Thank you. And you distributed that candy to different people in the... And you distributed that candy to different people in the parade, but you said you couldn't ride because you had to go back to work. And we had the breakfast. At the end, whether y'all came or showed up and left, I don't know, I was there. If you don't want to support this centennial, be honest with the people and stop lying about what, who has done what. I didn't come here to argue with you, I'm not gonna argue with you, and I'm not gonna fit and prove who said what and did what. You all know that once a budget is passed, there is no meeting necessary. And if you know your city ordinance, no meeting necessary to make the city manager pay a bill. Y'all only problem today is you have no authority over your vice mayor, whose obligation was to sign those checks. And she's in that position because of previous things that this city took ordinance to do. Now, that's not our responsibility. This is not our centennial. This centennial belongs to the city of Pahokee. And, and you are treating us as though we are thieves and robbers. Every dime that been sent to this city goes to the city clerk. I have a list of city people, of vendors, who have their money already, uh, to this city. To include, that's, I was recording, but I need to stop. Because I want you to know what, what, what shape you putting us in, and how disgraceful it is for us to be a city. And we not call ourselves poor, we not said we didn't have money, but everything we want to do, we find money. And then this a hundred years, this is history. This is history for us. A historical event that's taking place, the first in western Palm Beach County. And you are acting like you, this is your money, and somebody just put a gun in your face and hijacked, robbed you. Nobody has asked for a dime. None of these people have been compensated for nothing. And y'all know that. Me, uh, uh, Vice Mayor Bowlin, you've been up here longer than Perez and Gonzalez. You know how the process work. You know that you don't need no special meeting to approve it. Y'all approved a thirty-five thousand dollar budget. We could spend up to thirty-five dollars, we, you ain't bought me nothing. You have not bought anything for, if anything, what we've done. We've used our friends to lower their rates, so that we could have a good centennial. We used our family to help us do work. Under two hours that we allocated is just a drop in the bucket. Because I work all day long on issues, fighting and putting out fires because of negative things that come from people from these diets. And it's unnecessary. And I, I perceive the lies, that y'all didn't know what's happening to the date, that, that yesterday. You lie so much that you done thought the lies the truth, and God ain't pleased with that. Heaven is upset with that, and hell and jail is waiting on somebody who gonna do wrong continually for the rest of their life. We got to stop this if we gonna unify this city. And you don't have to fall in love with me. I didn't come up here for a pity party, and I didn't come to beg nobody to love me, because you can choose to love me or not. But it don't stop me from loving this city. We got people that are not members of our city, who have given and done more to help our centennial than we are have as a city. And it don't even make sense. It don't make sense for the little things that y'all are bickering about to separate this city like this. But change has to come, because if we don't, we would be nowhere. And I don't care how you feel about what has happened in this city, the past is over. But now, we got to move forward by faith, but we can never allow, citizens, y'all gonna have to be here. You can never allow people to take over the city.
We're gonna let her preach, or we're gonna just ask the question?
Like this was an insurrection that hindered this centennial, uh, program. So, the vendors are upset. So, what can we do? Tomorrow is Friday. The gala is Saturday. When the tick, when the checks were really ready last week, is that what you told me, uh, city manager? Last Friday was not the checks ready?
The checks were prepared last Friday.
And you signed them?
I did sign them.
Okay, the only signature missing was who?
Vice Mayor.
But, all right, and she never did and didn't do it, she didn't misunderstand this concept. She chose not to, and I think it was intentionally to sabotage the event. Those are the words, I want you to understand, that we have seven thousand five hundred. Let me give you the exact amount for the vendors.
Donors.
We have Healthier Glades, who have donated twenty-five hundred dollars. We have Bridges, a thousand dollar donation. We have Palm Health Foundation, one thousand dollars. Circle S Pharmacy, one thousand dollars. Brandenburg and Associates, two hundred and fifty dollars. Restoration Destination, two hundred and fifty dollars. JDPT, two hundred and fifty dollars. Boys and Girls Club, two hundred and fifty dollars. Nesbit Enterprise, two hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, Glaze Healthcare, two hundred and fifty dollars. Housing Partnership, bought tickets, two hundred dollars. Horatio Edwards bought a ticket, one hundred dollars. Glaze Initiative, one hundred dollars. GM Refrigeration, fifty dollars. Uh, Ms. Julia Hale, one hundred dollars, seven thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. That does not include, uh, Hill, which we were told was ten thousand dollars, did you confirm?
Five.
It was five thousand. So, that would make twelve thousand five hundred and fifty that you collected from outside sources, and you only paid one bill of three hundred dollars to Mr. Crawford for an event that happened in January, and it took him a month to pay it. Now, I want to understand why, who can respond to why we have not paid these people, and why we are in a situation? Because your decision today would be determined how we'll be able to process. I would not have people work and not pay. Y'all get paid every month. Whatever y'all donation is from the city, y'all get y'all check every month. And it's not fair to ask these vendors to do work for us by faith. And then, even if they take it, uh, on a monthly basis, that they haven't been paid in three months.
I have a question for the city manager.
We, we gonna move on.
You're not gonna let me ask the city manager a question?
Please let her ask, because it may help me to get the check signed today. If they're not gonna sign them today, we need to-
You don't know whether I'm in favor or not in favor, and stop making up my mind for me, all right? Mr. City Manager, can I ask you, please? Does this twelve thousand five hundred, you said?
Twelve thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Five hundred and fifty. Is that part of the thirty-five thousand, or is that on top?
That was donated by, I can answer that for you.
I don't, I'm not asking you, I'm asking the city manager. Is that a part of the thirty-five thousand, or is that on top of the thirty-five?
It would, it would be customary to be involved with the budget, but that would be up to the, the commission. You can, you can specify.
City manager, now we're changing the game.
No, no, not, not, I'm not changing it, it's up to the commission.
No, no, that's not what it was supposed to be like. Let me tell you why we in this space-
This is where we get everything all confused, because we don't get things straightened out right up front.
Because when we started this process, we only had ten, we only had ten thousand dollars. And, but five, and then you gave, raised it to ten, and said that we needed some fundraisers. We turned the gala then into a fundraiser. Nobody eats a hundred dollar worth of food, and y'all know that. The gala was a necessary fundraiser, because the city said they were too poor to sponsor this centennial. It went from five to ten. Then it went from ten to twenty. We had the gala already sponsored. And the sponsorship came because we had a lower price. It was the recommendation of the city manager, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, that we have the five, two fifty, two, twenty-five hundred thousand dollar ranges, and he was gonna take care of the top five thousand donors, all right? So, then, you made a motion after Ms., Mervyn had made many motions, our budget submitted to you guys were fifty thousand dollars. And that was, that was short. That was just trying to be as modest, but as beautiful as we can to celebrate such a historical moment. You made a motion for thirty-five thousand. They passed that motion at the last meeting, because your fellow colleagues voted yes for that, right? Then we hear that you wanted to rescind it. We don't know what happened. Whether you did or not, we still, it passed in this chamber for thirty-five thousand dollars. The other money is to help us reach, uh, exceed our goal, because it don't start with the gala in the centennial day. We are trying to, this whole year is a centennial year. We wanna embrace the cultures of all of our community. And, 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 and you have a team working on your behalf. How can you not want to give back to the people who made this city what it is? These people waited here all their lives.
Excuse me, if I understand, you believe the centennial committee was set up to do every event this year?
You, I believe that when y'all voted to place whatever person you voted for in the centennial, it was to celebrate the centennial for the city of Pahokee. Twenty-twenty-two is our centennial year. Our centennial year, we put a calendar together, we made recommendations, I sent it to all y'all who voted on it.
But you had three or four, you had three or four events on there. That's all.
No, every time we updated, as we had to change some dates with the Shining Show and different events, we tried to make sure that we embraced the culture of our city.
No, you added to it.
And one of those events was the Cinco de Mayo, at Juneteenth, we added it on the end, I sent it to every one of y'all. Now, if y'all decide, as a commission, that you don't want to embrace our Hispanic or Black community as we celebrate this, that's on y'all, that ain't on me, because I know what I'm gonna do. I'm all, this is not an argument about who y'all are and what you done in the past. I didn't disrespect you when you were talking, so please don't do that to me.
I, I think she's, can we ask, can we ask Mr. Pitney to speak? I have questions for real.
They got it, Pahokee, you got what you voted for.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, now, Mayor Baugh, Mayor Baugh, I would say that these people do not deserve to be verbally attacked by the, the, the elected officials, whether you are winner or loser. It is, it does not make sense, if you are so loser, you are not a soul man.
No, it's not a one-way ticket.
You out of order, you going through a mental meltdown.
You haven't seen him make a breakdown. You haven't seen one, buddy.
Um, I, I, I say again, and I, and I'm gonna sit down after this. At, whatever happens in the future of the city of Pahokee, we will never get anywhere if we hold grudges and we divided with our words and our actions. I am a human being. I'm sixty-eight years old, and maybe older than a lot of y'all mama or grandmother. I don't play games with grown folk, and I don't try to tell them what they already know. You already know what decisions you made in your heart and your mind. You already know what you don't want and what you do want. But if you want to serve on this diet, since you will respect the citizens of Pahokee, you will act like real commissioners. This does not make sense. This is not why we elected you. Whether we voted for you or not, once you took that oath. You did, yeah, you can call it what you want, a Mayor, a Bowler, Vice Mayor Bowler. You can call it what you want of preaching, that's my best trade. But I'm saying to you, that you need to respect, you need to respect, the citizens of Pahokee, who have elected you to serve wherever you're serving for your time there. And then, they will respect you back.
So, can we get down to business?
The business of this is I need to know today. If y'all gonna sign the checks today, and if y'all are not gonna sign the checks today, it would have a, an impact on what we do in the future. And then, two things, if you sign it today, we can make it happen. If we don't be signed when we left here, I demand that every sponsor money be responded to them. Johnny, you said you had money. That money has never been turned into us, and I cannot tell you-
Excuse me, did you turn in the three hundred dollars you collected that night in cash?
I did not collect anything, because I was not in the room.
Collected that three hundred dollars that night? Did y'all turn that in cash?
Johnny already brought that to us, yo.
For tickets that night in the room, in the committee meeting?
No, let, let me straighten that line right now.
Oh, I am, I was sitting right there and I saw it.
Three hundred dollars was not collected for tickets. Let me know, I got that. It wasn't three hundred dollars for tickets.
Yeah.
The tickets were the purchase, the tickets because the city had not voted, the, the, reimbursed the lady who was making the tickets. We submitted the bill to the city, there were a hundred and ninety-five dollars. We paid for the tickets, and they were supposed to reimburse the, it could go back to the people who gave it.
What happened if there was a hundred and ninety-five dollars, what happened to the other hundred and five?
They made a donation, they did, they made a donation. Mayor Baugh, it is not fair, it is not fair for a city commission to make an assumption when they don't know the facts about what happened to money. Uh, Gonzalez already made that, and I explained it to him. That money did not go to nobody in this commission. Though, that money, we sent the receipt to Mr. Pitney, who sent it in to the city. They paid for the tickets for the gala, so we will have them on hand.
There was three hundred dollars on the table that night?
Thank you, Pastor Wallace.
And Mr. Gonzalez, if you have monies that you have collected for the centennial, follow the process. No, no, wait, follow the process that you asked the committee to follow. And that's turn it in to the city. And if the donor don't want it to go to the centennial, then give it back to them, but don't make sure they know that the city don't have their money. Because it, uh, the understanding is people been got, not these committee members, but if any of y'all got money from anybody to represent this city, and you holding on to it, it gonna be between you and the police. Because I'm not standing for it, and I'm not gonna allow you to false accuse the member of the centennial team, who's, they noted, that, that donated their time and efforts for this city. And then you come up here and throw out false accusation without dealing with the facts. The facts are, everything you asked of us has been done in a very timely manner, and you have, have neglected your responsibility as a leader in this community, as officials, and now we're falling through the cracks, and you want somebody to blame, but it won't be us. Thank you for the time.
Now, hold on, hold on, I got something to say. I got something to say. Ms. Wallace, I never accused anybody about the three hundred, I asked you, what do you know about the three hundred?
Well, that's true, it wasn't three hundred, Pastor Wallace, because we gave Michael back a hundred of his dollars. Here is this guy, I'm gonna tell you that. He gave me a hundred, Mike originally gave me, but I told him that the tickets were two hundred dollars. That's what they gave me. A hundred of the dollars went back, I don't know where they get the three hundred dollars from.
They got it from Regina, who told it to, to Juan Gonzalez. And Juan Gonzalez asked me, what did y'all do with, the, the same way she said it today, is the way he asked me, what happened to the three hundred dollars? And if he wasn't there, he had to get it from Vice Mayor.
Like what? What's that, you don't like what? She knows I never accused you of anything, I said, what's going on with the three hundred that I hear about? That's what I asked her.
And I asked very politely if that money got turned in.
Ms. Wallace, you're a preacher, I never said that, I never said that.
I asked the people who had the money.
Uh, let me stay here till we correct-
Yes, I did, and he said it didn't.
You, you asked, what happened to the three hundred dollars that was turned in?
Yes, ma'am, and I asked it very politely, I did not accuse anyone of anything. And to me, usually, if somebody is guilty of something, it's when they jump all over you for asking a question. So, it's not that I asked it impolitely, or that I implied anything, it is that you took it that way. I asked politely, what happened to the money?
I got it.
Period, absolutely, that's all. So, as the mayor does, so do you, read into what, everything I say, what you believe I'm saying, not what I'm saying.
All right.
This, we could, we-
I make this final statement, I'll sit down.
I thought she was gonna-
For the record. Don't try. For the record, only two hundred dollars was donated to buy the centennial tickets that cost a hundred and ninety-five dollars. This gentleman was one of them that donated a hundred dollars, and Mike from the drugstore had donated two, we gave a hundred back to him. The ticket was a hundred and ninety-five dollars and some change. We sent in the receipt, we paid the lady that made the tickets, I have the tickets, and the receipt was sent to the city of Pahokee. There was never Commissioner Juan Gonzalez, Vice Mayor Bowlin, three hundred dollars, only two.
Okay, let me ask you this, then. Is it okay for y'all to take in cash, do what you want with it, and then give a, a receipt for it afterwards?
Well, you need to ask Mr. Gonzalez for that, he has money that he's taking in.
Is that how you're doing with the money that we have?
That's because the people donated it for that, they did not give it to the city.
It doesn't matter, all money is supposed to be turned into the city.
Pastor Wallace.
Every dollar was supposed to be turned into the city and accounted for.
Unless, unless they pay it directly, it's going to the city. It's going directly to the city and they pay the tickets.
Chair has the floor. We're not gonna bid, we're not even gonna- We're not gonna bid, we're not even gonna plead. This need to be postponed.
Yes.
And when the new commission get up here, this Centennial Committee will get what it's need to do. Now.
Ms. Wallace, Ms. Wallace.
Let me move a motion.
I don't have no money.
I have a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
I don't have no money.
Excuse me, Mr. Gonzalez. I'd like to make a motion that the Centennial Committee is only for the events that were on the original paperwork that we got. It is not all year long.
I second it.
It is the move by Commissioner Bowden. And second by Commissioner Perez, that the events for the Centennial Committee will be limited to only the four original events. Call for questions.
I do. Can we vote as the events come about, if we should have a, a committee or not at that time? Cause we never know who's gonna be here, who's not gonna be here.
Yeah, I mean, you, we, you shouldn't be in favor of a motion like that, it's ridiculous, but.
I'm not saying.
You shouldn't tell him how to vote.
Just saying, we should go event by event, play it by event by event.
The motion is, and it's on the floor, to limit it to only the original four. Either favor or not.
Well, I was under the impression this was the Centennial event that we're having now, just that. Everything else on the list wasn't even me. Because I never even mentioned any of that.
So, so, so I guess you're gonna vote against it then, or vote in favor of it?
Again, there you go, telling him how to vote.
Mr., Mr., Mr. Chair, just. In addition to questions. In addition to questions. Mr. Chair. No additional questions. You ready for a vote? Mr. Chair. You're not talking in this seat right here. Now, the Commissioner. I can speak. Not Cluason, no, you can't. It's, it's per our charter, I can speak on every motion. You can speak when you're asked to. Per our charter, no, that's your, that's your turn.
Per the charter, he can speak.
Per your charter, I get to speak. We in the debate, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
And according to the charter, he is allowed.
Per your charter.
You should read that charter once in a while, you'd know what it says.
You, you think you're Cluason, but you're not. I'm speaking to the city attorney. Per our charter.
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. The committee, the commission is in the debate, we in our discussion. Do the city of manager have any rights
Yes, he does.
To interject anything without us asking him to be part of this discussion?
Mr. City Manager, would you like to speak?
We're talking to the city attorney.
I just asked him, you said he needed to be asked, so I asked him.
It's just for clarification, by the way.
Um, Mr. Mayor, to, to answer your question, um, as you all know, I am, I'm substituting here. Uh, and, um, I'm happy to review the charter. If you want to take a ten-minute recess, I'm happy to review that and then come back to you with the response.
Okay, my ruling is, we're not gonna allow the city manager at this point to talk. We have a second on the floor. We're calling for questions, no additional questions, we're asking for a vote. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mervin?
No.
Commiss, Mayor Bab?
No. My motion would be to postpone this Centennial. We evidently have three commissioners.
No, we gotta, we gotta pay the, we gotta pay the bills.
Not in support of it. And we're not gonna beg them.
No.
We're not gonna beg them at all. We have our new com.
We're gonna pay the bills, let us pay the bills. That's what this meeting's about. It wasn't for all the bickering. I spent, I called for this meeting to pay the bills.
Listen to your wife, what she's telling you in the audience, ma'am.
You shouldn't even have to motion that anyway, to pay the bills.
But if that's what's hindering, this is, this is getting out of the way, let's just pay everything.
You should not have to motion to pay the bills. It was passed already to pay the bills. The bills should automatically get paid. That should not, that, that's not even a vote.
So you'd rather propose anything than to actually put a vote to pay it right now?
So, I, I will concur as to motion that we will postpone this Centennial. We will explain to the vendors what's going on, hopefully they might be looking at what's going on right now. So we need to postpone this Centennial until we can get a better people with respect to the citizens of Pahokee, that we can represent the City of Pahokee. My motion is to postpone the Centennial event until the new commissioners are get, uh, be swearing in.
Well, just for the record, I called this meeting to pay the vendors.
I, I said, I, I second a motion.
I'm not hindering you guys, I'm here to pay the bills.
You have to hand the gavel off when you second a motion.
I don't have to hand the gavel off in second a motion.
Okay, that's it, I just wanted it on tape, thank you.
Thank you. Call for questions. Harry, now you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowler?
No.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
The motion failed to postpone the Centennial.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
By default, it'll be postponed if no payments are being made.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the committee be required to bring back the quotes and get approval by the commission to spend money out of the budget, out of the budget.
I second it.
Uh, Vice Mayor Bowler? I do have them.
I understand. I'm talking from here forward.
Oh, from, from the future, from the future.
From, from now.
For the future, for the future.
While this committee is in, in, combined, or whatever you want to call it.
Commissioner Bowden, and second by Commissioner Perez, moving forward to call for questions.
Mayor Bab, this is really sad.
Harry, now, are you ready for a vote?
I have a, I'm, I have a comment. This is really sad, and we can all see.
Let's pay the people.
We can really see what's really going on right now. This, that last motion, because she postponed the events, does not the people that already did the service from getting paid. Even if you do the motion what she said, the checks still need to be signed. We just, what is the problem with paying the vendors? What's the problem? We can, we can clearly see the issue is with the committee, and who's the chairman of the committee.
I can care less.
Cause it's, it's really, it's really sad.
She say she can care less. I, I don't want to present it like we're begging because we're not. Allow her to make these, uh, motions that we'll move forward.
She's not part of this. Why is that the city manager is not allowed to comment, but somebody in the audience is allowed to comment? Really, under discussion?
For the, it's for the future, it's for the future.
But you can let somebody in the audience comment, but you won't let the city manager comment when we're having discussions?
We have a second.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay, we got a motion and a second now.
Uh, Mayor.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, no, we in a question.
Oh, yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Don't worry about it.
Mayor?
I, I, I have something, I have something to say. Okay? Uh, this could have been such a beautiful and unified event.
I agree.
It was just hijacked from the beginning.
I agree.
Like almost everything that happens in the city, that happened in the city in the past. You see people, even though you elected two new commissioners, okay? Even though we got rid of, either, either, either we got rid of and some that decided to quit before that he got too hot, you know, and they walked out. All the corruption. But you had nine months, and you did not give us time to get a, get, get, get settled and move on.
Commissioner Perez.
But you have made your choice, you got the same people back, cause you're gonna go back to the same.
Commissioner Perez, in a special call meeting, you have to stay on topic. You're out of order.
I could speak, and I could say what I wanna say.
Now, you can't say what you want.
Yes, I could say what I wanna say, because everybody else here said it. Everybody else here said it.
It has to be patented to them.
Everybody else here said whatever they wanted to. You got people here that have not come to this commission office, this commission chambers all their lives, but they're here now because you guys won, because they're no longer uh, in, 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 in a, in a state where they could go to jail for what they've done.
Roll, roll call on that last motion, so we can move forward.
Vice Mayor Bowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Commissioner Mervin?
No.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. No, I'm sorry, no.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I do have an answer regarding the charter to your question earlier, if you'd like.
Yes.
Um, so, so in the charter, um, here in the City Code of Ordinances, um, in section two, dash twenty-six, city commission meetings generally. Um, if you see, uh, item, uh, H, it, it specifies, uh, no person other than members of the commission and the person having the floor shall be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through the members of the commission. When requested by any member of the commission, the city manager, city attorney, as well as staff members may enter, enter, may enter into any discussion. No questions shall be asked the commissioners, except to the presiding officer. The city manager and the city attorney may ask the chair for permission to speak at any time. And that's the end of that section.
So you were wrong.
No, I wasn't wrong, I was absolutely right.
I asked him to speak. I asked him to speak, and that's what it says.
Did it say both chair or city commission? And you didn't ask him at that particular time?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
The, the specific, the specific question, I believe, the section is, when requested by any member of the commission, the city manager, city attorney, as well as staff members may enter into any discussion. So, there would need to be a request by any member of the commission.
Okay, it, it's apparent, we, we went through that particular vote, it's apparent that we don't have a unified commission, one that's not in favor of this Centennial. Uh, my, uh, suggestion would be to, again, cancel this event, postpone it to a later date. And we, if we don't get, if we can't pay the vendors, it's in default anyway. There's no way we can move forward, uh, with this Centennial, until we can get.
This is our only issue, if I'm allowed to speak, it's your issue. These vendors, some have already supplied us with their material. We owe them.
That's paid off.
Some vendors, vendors still need to be paid, because they cancel events, the security, that that was supposed, that, that, those were deposit dollars. So whether we delay it, whether we cancel it, or never have it in our life, you owe these people.
Yes.
And, and it is a disrespect to these citizens around this western public county to allow them to do service for us and not pay them. So, even if we postpone it, or cancel it, whatever this commission has desire, ain't gonna, ain't, ain't gonna kill us. But you do ruin your reputation with future vendors. Now, you have some that have not been affected, and maybe everybody got something in their pocket they can pull out. But Mr. Sam King, you owe Mr. Sam King, you owe Mr. Cynthia Harold, you owe Mr. Travis Hatton, and you owe Cole Brothers, y'all ate his breakfast, and they paid the man. The signs that you got around the city, Travis Hatton put those out, made them signs and some shirts. We owe them, whether y'all cancel it or not. Oh, you were, it's been ninety days. If we have not paid these people, so, I don't care about y'all canceling. I do care whether those checks are written, to do our diligence to the people that gave us faith.
City Attorney, in the event that we have an emergency situation, where we have a signee of the banking refusing to sign checks, can one signature, and I think it's somewhere in there, that one signature will allow the city manager to pay obligations on behalf of the city?
Uh, there is a section with respect to emergencies. Um, I, I would need a moment to clarify, but, um, yeah, I, I, I would, I would need a moment to clarify. A question for the manager, if I may. Do these vendors have a purchase order with the city, or have they just submitted invoices?
They have purchase orders.
They got. Some have purchase orders.
Okay. The vendors who have purchase orders will get paid under the conditions of the purchase order. So the purchase order specifies that. Um, and so it might not be as quickly as they would like, but the purchase order does give them a right to get paid. So for those vendors, that would, um,
But we're trying to look at timely payment. We know eventually, all of them will, but we're in a situation where we're ruining our entire reputation as a city by having vendors submit their proper invoices, and we're refusing to pay. We normally have two signatures on a check. We got a vice mayor, and the next thing I probably would need to do, once this election is certified, I will call a special meeting to go ahead and swear in the incoming commissioner.
Unfortunately.
So we can at least have a full commission to move forward.
Unfortunately, Mayor Bab, they have to be sworn in at a regular commission meeting.
The next regular commission meeting.
Per our charter, so it has to be the next regular commission meeting.
Again, I didn't wait.
Which is the twenty-second, it's already scheduled.
Since, since Commissioner Gonzalez wants the, this meeting to get paid, let's just make the motion that the checks, that already the vendors, as Pastor Wallace have stated, be made. So I make a motion that the vendors get paid, that the, whoever did not sign the checks that need to sign needs to sign the checks as of today, before today ends. Which is in another one hour. That checks can get signed, and vendors can get paid. That's my motion.
If you have a PO.
With or without POs? With the ones, you're talking about the ones with the POs, right?
I, I have a question for council. Council can vote of the, cause I sure don't want to get in trouble processing a check with a single signature. Is it possible for the commission to overrule our, our code? Or the law?
I will tell you that an emergency traditionally is a hurricane, or a break of a water main. Um, these events have been planned for quite a while. I understand there's been some hiccups in administration of the events, but I would not classify them as emergencies in that we knew that they were coming for at minimum a few months. Um, I think it would expose the city to some liability if it classified these expenditures as emergencies. Um, certainly, the commission can give direction as it sees fit. Uh, but I will tell you that, that is, um, that sort of would be the sticky, not clear and clean answer, because they have been planned for, you know, more than little time.
So Mayor, the, the motion is that checks be signed. So my question is, Vice Mayor Bowler, are you, are you gonna sign the checks? That's the question to Vice Mayor Bowler.
Whatever the commission decides.
So the motion is that Commissioner, Vice Mayor Bowler, then will sign the checks, so the vendors has already have submitted their supplies, the, the POs is already with the city, get paid.
There's a second?
Second.
The move by Commissioner Mervin, and proper second by Commissioner Gonzalez, that the vendors who have submitted their invoices be paid and have the vice mayor sign the checks. Because the city manager have already signed, and they're waiting to be.
Those are the POs, correct? That's the ones you're talking about?
Checks, checks, money, pay the vendors.
Yeah, but she said, she said there's something that can look shady, I don't want us to.
On the shady part, she said if there's one signature.
So we're calling it an emergency, so we're bypassing that.
If he has a purchase order, it's been approved. Does not have a purchase order, it has not been approved by the city. I want to ask them, city manager, uh, do, do, every time they send you an invoice, did you give a purchase order? Or, or is there a procedure to comply?
Well, that's-
Did they, did they turn in your, the quote to you? Who picked the quote? And, and how did you issue the PO?
All of the quotes were submitted through Mr. Pickney. Mr. Pickney reviewed them and followed through with me.
And you saw the three quotes, or that was not necessary, that was not to Mr. Pickney?
They all have three quotes. Mr. Pickney has them with him presently. I have them.
When, when did they have the three quotes, when they were first turned in?
Before, before I would sign anything, it, it needs three quotes. If it's over three hundred, it takes two, if it's over-
Did you have the three quotes before you signed any of them?
It's the backup information for the PO, yes.
Not the backup, you have all three quotes on the, on the invoice.
That's the backup, is the three quotes.
The PO.
Yes, ma'am.
So, then I'm a little confused. Why didn't everything have a PO? You're saying some had POs, some didn't. Why didn't the others have POs?
The other one is already paid. The one for, for MLK.
That didn't have a quote. Okay.
And then I was misinformed, too.
Well, let's, well, let's correct this.
That's what I'm trying to do.
With the Martin Luther King, there was two weeks prior to that event. I went to Mr. Thompson, we discussed the Martin Luther King, because there was no Martin Luther King event planned for the city of Pohokee. So I went to Mr. Thompson and said, "Mr. Thompson, we could not let a day like this pass in the city of Pohokee." He gave me the authority and the, the go-ahead to plan this event for the Martin Luther King under Mr. Thompson. It was one week left to try to plan a Martin Luther King event. Am I not right so far, Mr. Thompson? I went by him and told him the logistics of the event. That's how Mr. Crawford came about. It's only three hundred dollars.
It doesn't matter if the city requires a PO for it and require a PO.
It was only, you didn't have time to get, you didn't have time, you didn't have time. And he did, yes, he did. He submitted, uh, and to Pastor Wallace, she submitted it to the city.
Mr. Mr. Manager, isn't anything over three hundred dollars required to have bids?
It requires two.
Yeah.
It wasn't over three hundred.
Two was signed, and that bill is paid, so why are we discussing?
It's paid, it's done.
It got paid. So that's the only one that didn't have a PO originally that's been paid.
Mayor Bab, the motion is on the floor. There was a second, it's time for roll call.
Everything else has a PO?
Everything else is on hold.
That I'm asking you, is everything now-
Yes.
Yes.
Has a PO and everything has all the bids that it's required to have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, in addition question, here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
I don't know whether, what-
Voting to pay the invoices that's been submitted, and everything is in order.
The commissioners are the ones that are disrespectful. Just recording this.
You called my name, uh, city clerk?
She said, "Yeah."
See what we have to endure.
What was her response?
She said, "Yes."
Yes.
Okay, yes. Mayor Bab?
Yes. Motion passed by unanimous vote.
You have the checks here. Bring them on.
Checks are here and the vice mayor will be signing. Thank you, vice mayor. Thank you, commissioners. Any other business need to be brought forth, any other motion need to be passed?
So we did say the centennial, we paying these, correct me, Pastor Wallace, but we are postponing the, our house.
We will meet with the committee today. The, the problem is, can the full preparation be done in two days? Not if they waited so late and the decorations can be done. We have sold tickets for the centennial. We have people sitting down-
How many tickets?
As we speak now, waiting to buy tickets. But seeing the, the way our city's been operating, it has people on pause, if you want to know the truth. But we have people that want tickets right now.
Yeah.
I don't think we will sell out. We have two hundred seats. I'm still waiting on, uh, Mr. Thompson, you getting ten, ten seats, right?
Yes, ma'am, for the, for the city, yes.
For centennial.
Yes, ma'am.
Currently, how many you have sold? Do you have an idea?
I don't have his ten, but his ten, I don't know, I don't know.
Ballpark?
Committee will submit tonight, but we only give tickets once we receive the money. Once the clerk certifies that those checks have cleared the bank, then those tickets for those sponsors, their tickets are secure and will call. And anybody that want a ticket, it has to be paid before you get a ticket.
So do you have a ballpark idea of how many tickets are sold?
Maybe fifty or sixty.
Thank you.
Pastor Wallace, I have five hundred dollars in tickets.
Mr. Chair?
I have five tickets, too, or we'll get five.
Mr. Chair?
We asked you to just sell some, so I'm waiting on the commission.
Just, just a question. You know, the city is committed to ten tickets. Would the commission entertain in giving those to staff and purchasing their own tickets so we can seat more table? That's completely up to you all, but if you would like to donate those to staff that works year-round and maybe the commission purchase their own tickets?
That's a wonderful idea.
Well, can we do more than ten? How many employees do we have that's willing to, to come? I think if just ten, then see who-
Some, some will be working.
So they already be-
Some, some will be. Assisting with you, ma'am.
Okay, so the ones that, so then the ones that's working with the ten, that's all the employees?
Oh, no.
So that I'm saying, can we get a number from your, what employees that would like to come? I think the city should-
I can get you that number.
Yeah, and then-
It'd be hard to come up with.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But my question tonight would be, maybe we can donate the staff and then the commission commit to- Yes, ma'am. Seeing that we're a little short, you know, anything to help out?
They just, oh, worms. But I don't have a problem getting my tickets.
Well, my question, my question right now would be the ten that we've already committed to.
I'll, I'll make a motion that, uh, the city purchase their ten tickets and provide them to staff who's willing and wanting to attend.
Then I'll follow up with them.
And if, if there's, are we making a motion, is that motion part of however many more want to go were proven tonight? Or how are you gonna do that after this meeting's over? Because the event is in two days, so don't you think we need to decide on that right now?
That'd be up to the commission.
How many ballpark idea?
Guessing who would want to go is, is, be very difficult. I, I honestly think-
Let me ask you this, how many staff we have total?
Right at thirty.
Okay, maybe the motion could be amended that we provide tickets to up to thirty employees. Certainly, probably be lower than that, but if that's not a real problem with the city or the commission, and even if the maximum of ten, we're only talking about three thousand dollars total, a hundred dollars per ticket.
So I would mean that a motion that it would be up to thirty tickets for the employees.
Can we get a second on that? Moved by Commissioner Mervin and properly seconded by Commissioner Gonzalez. Call for questions. Here and now, are you ready for a vote? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, commission. The motion passed by unanimous vote. Are there any other business or motions that need to be moved forward pertaining to this centennial? Okay, we'll quickly now go into commissioner comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Gonzalez.
I expected it to last this long. It's just work together to make this centennial, these centennial events happen and be very supportive with the gala and everything else. I thank you for coming.
Again, I would just like to thank the centennial committee, those who are purchasing tickets to attend the gala, and just the commission as a whole for supporting this event. Commissioner Vice Mayor Bowlin.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad that we clarified how this process is supposed to go so that the next commission coming in will not have these issues to deal with.
I want to thank the centennial committee. I think it's sad that you have to do what you would have done to do for the city. I think it's really sad that the five of us could not fully support this event that should have been supported months ago. It's bad we have to fight. It almost looks as if, and this is something that we are paying to have our own birthday party in our city of Pohokee. I think that's really sad. Even with the money that we're collecting, we're giving it back to the city. So, to me, it's almost like, what are we really celebrating? And I'm hoping that the citizens would be happy to even come to this event, which I'm really, hopefully, I'm not, that a lot of them have been turned off already for even attending this. I'm very heartbroken that this had to happen this way. And it shouldn't come from a fight to celebrate a one-hundred-year. It's almost like my grandmother turning a hundred years old, and I'm fighting trying to buy a birthday cake with the family to celebrate her. Who's gonna buy the cake? You know, it's, it's as simple. We trying to celebrate this, the, the city for turning one-hundred years old, the citizens of this community. It's really sad. It doesn't matter whether you're elected, not elected, white, black, Hispanic. We're one, we're supposed to be one in this city. The centennial is for everybody. All we had to do was just try to say, what do we need to make this happen? And that's all we had to do. So I'm hoping that we come out and celebrate the centennial. I'll be on the meeting tonight at six, or seven, six o'clock, seven o'clock. But I would, every, and I know even some of the committee members, the, the chairmen over those different departments are very heartbroken. They don't even feel to even do it anymore. And the push to keep doing it, my hat's off to y'all.
Thank you. I entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourn this meeting.
Then second and move.
Who's second?
Perez second. I'm saying-
Commissioner Perez?
Yes.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bowlin?
Yep.
Commissioner Mervin?
Yes.
Mayor Bab?
Yes, motion passed by unanimous decision. Meeting adjourned.